It is Tuesday, April 28th, 2015. It is 7:00 PM and this is the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting. And would everybody please stand and salute the flag?
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Now, this meeting is being recorded and transmitted. And is there anybody else in the audience who are recording the meeting at this time? Okay, no. Alright, so discussion, 440 Washington Street. Mr. Wade, minor modification to previous approved site plan landscaping design. Mr. Wade?
I'm not sure if they're gonna put it up there or not.
I hope so.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, you got the trees in front. That was the last modification, right?
Yeah, the trees in the front can do that. There's seven of them. I think I can get eight. The problem here is when we put in the gas which goes over here, we hit wedge. But I think we broke it, so I think it will, you know, go there. Okay, this area over here is where the transformer is for the power coming in. That's what goes right in here, alright? So basically, I can still get the plantings here. And then around the transformer, I was gonna take it and put sea grass or some perenniums there. Okay, so that would cover there. The problem I have with this right here is this is the only area that I have for my snow to push snow. I can't put anything here because I basically push it here and come around the back of the building.
Okay.
Yep. This plant in here, because the tenant, one of the tenants I have is non-metallic. He wants to put a flag pole in, so a lot of this stuff is gonna go around the flag pole, alright? And I can also, because I'm moving some of this, I think I can get three of the trees which I have in the front, which will be the same as what I have in motorsports. And I was gonna put those up here to fill this in. But I also got a steep bank, so I wanna make sure what I'm putting in is gonna do.
So what do you want to do? You want to remove those trees that are way in the back?
Yes. I mean, this goes in the back to there.
And there's another building.
Because basically, yes. When I push snow, which is all here, we push it here, okay? And then we push it around the back here. It's the only place I have it. And with this year, I'm learning more about snow than I ever have. And I know that's, you know, I need some area to push the snow. Hopefully, you don't have a winter like we had, you know, last year, but...
You have a timeline on this, Mr. Wade?
Yeah, they're gonna start on it. We should be starting on it next week. Yeah. And I gotta get the, I gotta fill the front in, like I says, because I deal with wedge across the whole front. So I gotta change my grade up here, so my trees will take, okay? Then I've got a sprinkler system going in all around also.
You having any trouble with parking? I mean, those play businesses look like they're very busy.
Yeah, so far, no.
Those lights in the front of that building, they seem to stay on all night long.
They're on a, what do I wanna say? They're on a...
Highway?
No, they're on a photo light.
Oh, okay, so when it gets dark, they go on.
When it gets dark, they come on. And then when it gets light, they go off.
Pretty bright. I live on Old Collin Road, and when I look out my window, that's all I can see. Looks like the sun.
Yep.
There should be some way to...
Shut them off.
There should be some way to shut them off after a certain time.
If there's nobody in the building?
Yeah, right. Well, the same thing with my motorsports. I keep the whites on that or all.
I haven't seen any problem from that, just a new building.
Yep.
If you could look into that, I appreciate it.
I will.
You know, as far as the six trees out back, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, nobody sees them anywhere.
You gotta put, you gotta put the snow someplace.
Yes.
So I mean, as far as being reasonable, I think that we could take care of that.
So those trees weren't gonna be used to, you know, for in a butter or anything as a...
No, no, it isn't.
What is it? Is it Great Dane in the back there?
Great Dane is in the back, and they also have this little area right over here too. So in other words, it is, that's the only place I have the snow. And I mean, I learned a lot, like I says, of how to push it this year.
All good.
Yeah, so, had to make it so everybody could come in, so...
I don't have any problems with it.
No?
No? No? Alright. So, what's the pleasure of this?
I'll make a motion that we approve the modification.
Okay. Motion's been made, that we approved the modification and seconded. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Yeah, I will.
Check on those lights.
I will, I definitely will.
Alright, discussion. 716 Southbridge Street. Michael Capers requesting for spa waiver of public hearing requirements proposed at studio. Retail sales business is defined under section 3.2.6.8 of the Auburn zoning bylaws. How you doing, Michael?
Is it? Introduce yourself. Mike Capers.
Okay.
Just moved to Auburn last year. And we're looking to open up the shop.
Okay.
And here we got some photos of the parking lot. And kind of an estimate on the space, basically, yeah.
Through the chair, Mike, could you describe the use of the building, what you've done under there?
Sure. So we're opening a half-retail, half-walk-in art studio. We were inquiring about the BYOB license because of, we're gonna do paint nights, have people show up, you know, 7:00 to 8:00, or 7:00 to 10:00, what have you.
Been to them.
Yeah, there you go, so...
The only thing with the, you could get, you're gonna have to limit the number of people to go, because you could get 100 people applying for the thing.
Well, yeah, we only have 30 chairs, so...
Yeah. You'd have to limit it that.
It'd be nice if we had 100 people coming in for it every night, but...
Who exactly is that?
That's Reedy's barbershop.
Oh, Reedy's barbershop.
That's Terry's old tailor shop.
Yep. Does he have all the correct parking for the...
I was gonna say, money parking spaces, it doesn't look like it's lined.
It's the requirement for the building, based on its square footage and the number of employees on the makeshift for all three businesses, 21 spaces. There's 10 striped out front, and there's nothing striped out back at this time.
Mr. Reedy owns the building, or LLC owns the buildings. Is it, are you gonna stripe that?
We are. Yeah, after I talked to Mr. Benoit, I did go out and measure it out. There's at least seven along the back wall that I can put in. There's another three towards the LP tank, and I can line going down the Jersey barriers, probably with another five or six.
Does that meet the requirements?
To pass a fire truck?
No. You're gonna be able to get a fire truck through there. Well, if the Jersey barriers weren't there, you could, but what was happening is...
That's the property line.
Yeah, it's the property line.
Yeah.
And I think Nukem owns the building in the back. Nukem and Jim.
Well, without those parking spaces along the Jersey barrier, is it still in the...
We still have enough parking. From what I spoke to Mr. Benoit about, we still have enough parking to accommodate what's required. I disagree upfront, we actually have 11 spots up front and a handicap.
Eleven.
We have 11 plus a handicap, and then, like I say, I can fit, I could probably do a handicap along that wall with another six regular, and then I can fit a couple more in there along the building.
If you've got 30 chairs there, though, does that mean you need 30 parking spaces?
I don't think so. No. I think that stipulation applies to restaurants.
The back's bigger than the front.
And places that serve food.
Much bigger.
This place is not proposing to serve any food to its patrons.
Unless they get a beer and wine license. Do they have to go, you have to go before the selectmen?
No, it's a BYOB.
How wide is it in the back?
I've been back there. I'm sorry, I didn't write down the measurements. Like I said, I can do, if I move that dumpster, I can probably, if I take that dumpster out, I can get, I can get nine spots back there.
Okay, against the wall there?
Yes.
Yeah, I think each section's probably about five feet. That's my truck.
Actually, each block's 16 wide.
There you go.
Required parking space would be nine feet.
Nine feet?
Or eight and a half feet.
Alright, so each block is how much?
There's six feet.
You got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9.
9, 10, there's one behind, you don't see.
One behind the truck and one behind the dumpster?
So you've got 60 feet.
Yep.
I don't know if, we haven't really ever had one like this, where you put a double down the middle and a 12-foot, turn an aisle on each side, and leave a 12-footer on the end, run around, you might get. How long is it?
What you should basically do, okay, what we usually require other people to do, is to come up with some kind of a rendering on paper with exactly what the parking is gonna be and where it's gonna be. And if we let you not do it, then we're gonna have to do it for a lot of other people.
No, that really isn't what I was looking for here. Basically, after I talked to Mr. Benoit, I went down and I measured it up, and there's no problem accommodating what he had told me at that time.
I know, but we can't see it.
Right.
I understand that, obviously. I mean, I can go line it out and do that.
Mr. Reedy and I also looked through the chair for a pre-existing site plan for the property. I couldn't find anything with the town clerk or not, because the site's been there a long time. So there's no pre-existing layout for parking at all.
It used to be.
It's very close to square, so it's gonna be, you know, 60 by 60 roughly.
I mean, even with the current parking out front, to accommodate the 21 required spaces for retail store, general personal services, studio building, or trade, one space for 180 square feet in that floor area, plus one space per employee in the largest shift. For the square footage of the building, we already went over, plus an assumed three employees would be 21 spaces, so if there's 11 out front, we could find a way to fit 10 in the back. And that's a minimum requirement.
You could contact the line painting guy, because they're pretty good at figuring out how you can, how you can get them in.
That's where I was gonna go, go next. Yeah. I didn't, you know, I understand that you'd actually like to see it, but I'd actually just like to get the job done and have it, because I know I have the land to do it, okay? But I wanna get somebody in there that can lay it out. So if I'm waiting on an approval to do it, you know, it just gives me another step. I mean...
Well, as I said, we have to be able to see the parking chart.
Yes.
Because that's, that's what we regulate. We make sure you got enough parking for the people that you're gonna be there with.
And that the fire trucks can go in there, and all the rest of the stuff goes with it. Very rarely does anybody come in here, you know, looking for waivers, et cetera, without having a drawing of exactly what they're doing with the parking.
Well, maybe I got misinterpreted what we were doing.
I don't have any problem with your business, okay? I have no problem with that whatsoever.
No, not with the business.
But, you know, we're under scrutiny here too, and I don't, I'm not gonna do anything, or not do anything with this that I wouldn't do for somebody else.
No, I'm not looking for that. Well...
If I took some of these pictures and put them in Photoshop and measured everything out and have had some numbers for you guys, that's what you're looking for?
Have a guy, have one of the mining companies come in and look at it, you know? I imagine they'd give you a...
They get inventive.
They'd give you an estimate for nothing, I would think.
You may even be able to use aerial photography for that.
Yeah.
It's, like Mr. Rotherford pointed out, those fire trucks need to be able to get back there, turn around, and have enough spaces back there to meet the minimum requirement, so... From the beginning, when you came in with the license, we need to...
Well, it's already existing. I mean, they're not, it's not likely they're gonna be able to pull in and turn around. I mean, if there was a fire...
Right, that's why we're here now.
We wanna see the parking spaces, but still, you know, if the fire truck had to stay in the middle, it's, there's a fire, so people will go around.
But it may eliminate the ability to run parking spaces, lines, parking spaces on the side of the property. That's why we're here today, is because there's no proposed new impervious surface, there's no proposed change to the building. So the waiver for cycle approval is a red application, but support's pointed out, to see how this is gonna be laid out.
Yeah. Everything else is good, Sean, except we wanted, we gotta see the parking lot space.
Okay. Is that something we have to bring to the next meeting, or is that something if we cut over to you guys in the next couple of days?
Well, we can't vote on it till the next meeting anyway. In other words, we have to see it, then we can vote on it.
You can, you can bring it in the interim, you can bring it to Mr. Benoit.
Okay.
You know, that's not a problem. Just continue it till the next meeting?
It's not really continuing, it's a discussion, we just carry it over.
Okay, alright. It's a discussion, so we'll carry it over to the next meeting. Get it, no?
Are it weekly meetings, or?
No.
May 12th is our next meeting.
12th, we'd be twice a month.
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth week. But the concept is very good. As I say, I've been to a couple of those. My pictures are really great, too.
So you don't want me to go ahead and have this striped until you approve?
That's right.
Yeah, but, you know, have them laid out.
Even, even someone striping it needs to follow a plan.
Yeah, yeah. If they, in other words, if they give you a plan to stripe it, right? You don't have to stripe it until we approve it, then, then they'll just follow their plan and stripe the thing, according to your plan.
Their plan, their plan might be perfect.
Might be exactly what we need.
Alright, alright, okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Nice to see you again, Sean.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. Welcome home. Special permit on birth pill.
And me.
Hmm? That's going to what? Make, make...
I'm sorry. I think you're looking at the one with the red ink. I moved everything down.
What?
Oh, it's Marcos Rosa.
I'm here.
You have to turn on the old timer.
What do you mean?
You should be looking at the one with the red ink. The one I handed out. I don't know where you're hitting.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at the one with the red ink.
Yes, there you go.
Okay, okay, so we don't have that. We have Marcos Rosa, is it?
Yes.
Well, welcome, Marcos.
Good evening.
You're coming here for a special permit under section 3.2.6.10 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for multiple business use of motor vehicle repair combination with sales of mobile electronics on property 844 to 848 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass. Map 65, parcel 24. Yes?
I'll motion to open with the order.
I entertain a motion to open.
Make the motion and wait to open the hearing.
Okay.
I'll second it.
The motion's been made and seconded. We open a hearing on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No, it's a, motion carries. Okay, so...
Hi, my name is Marcos Rosa, and I'm looking into opening up a body shop automotive business in the town of Auburn. I already attended a DCG meeting a few months back, which they, they gave me feedback on certain things I would have to look into, like they were concerned about Mass DEP. I did my research. I had a couple engineers come from, from an environmental, I believe it is, an environmental analysis, and also an engineer came by, wrote us a report on, on if we would need any air permits or anything. But everything went great. I did the research, I submitted the report with all my paperwork, and...
Okay, now, that used to be a auto detailing place, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Where was that part? On that stretch where Chili's is and the old Mass 10, just down a little bit from that. There's another...
Right near Mass Liquors.
Yeah, Mass Liquors, yeah. And it used to be a hot tub place in there at one point.
You're gonna continue doing the mobile electronics, the tinting, the detailing, and in addition to that, you're looking for paint booth?
Yes.
So all you're doing is adding the paint booths?
That's it.
Through the chair, this also came through the ZBA for the extra permanent manage, the motor vehicle repair, and this was last Thursday, a vote of approval was granted. Decision to be rendered and signed at the next meeting.
Okay, so we got approval from the ZBA? So what's he need from us then?
This is the multiple business use permit that's managed or enforced by the planning board.
Okay.
As their special permit granting authority. And also, there's a request for the waiver of site plan approval for the use.
Not doing anything to the land?
Right. No, no change in impervious, no change in the footprint of the building.
Okay. What about the conservation and the rest of, everybody else signed off on it?
This wasn't in conservation jurisdiction.
It does say that it's in the aqua from zone two.
Yes, the ZBA did the special permit last week for that, yes.
And how about the fire department? Dealing with paints?
DCG, be your feedback from DCG. I wasn't here for that, so...
Yes, I got the feedback. Fire department, it's all said, we spoke to them afterwards, they were, they were fine with it. They just required we would need any special air permits, but being it's a low VOC chemicals to the air, we will not need any special permit for that.
And it's all water-based, is that my understanding?
It is water-based.
Okay. Now, what the hell's going on behind it? It looks like a bus parked there, it looks like a bunch of...
This is very old aerial photos, must be five years old.
Oh, okay.
Sorry to say what's back there.
2010. 2010, yeah.
Alright.
So this is the mass discount liquor store here.
Yep.
And Mr. Rosa's looking to occupy the space right here.
Okay, not the whole space, though, is it?
Uh, no, there's still a business in the front.
Yeah.
That's the dance studio?
Yes.
Well, what's the pleasure? And...
I think that as long as, I think that as long as we get all the signed document, you know, signed documents from the different departments, that everything is approved and up to code, I don't have a problem with this, as long as everything's been done.
And it seems, appears from the, you know, the letter, that you've done all of your homework before you came to see us.
Where are you gonna have automobile storage?
Really, really storage, I don't need to store too many cars, because the business is actually conducted by a schedule, so I can't really store cars. It'll be, you know, I give a client a set date within maybe a week or two, and then off he goes, then I can schedule other jobs. Can't really store too many cars. I don't wanna get clients upset anyways, you know?
You also mentioned at ZBA that you'll have a trailer for parts as needed, but they'll be contained inside of a trailer.
Yes, which will be parts that we will take and re-take to a scrapyard. Those type of, I'll put them in a container, which won't be outside just throwing around.
Should be out of sight from the road?
Yes.
Anyone in the audience have anything to say? Well, what's the pleasure of the board?
What about lighting?
I believe there's any changes to your site lighting.
No changes to the lighting?
No changes. It's, it's not a, not a residential area anyway.
So changes to photography, lighting, landscape, site plan, drainage, or any other, so...
Well, I don't have any problem with it, it's up to you, the rest of you.
Well, I entertain a motion.
I make a motion to...
Close the meeting first, or?
I'm sorry, make a motion to close the meeting, close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so now we'll entertain a motion. He's got the regular, our new standard conditions?
Not yet, we still have to vote those in, so, but generally, yeah, they can be used as a reference.
Okay. So, I entertain a motion to approve the waivers with standard conditions, or read the standard conditions?
I'll second it.
I can't make it.
Can I make the motion?
I'll make the motion, please. I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded to approve the waivers with the standard conditions, which are, special permits, special permits shall become effective only when it has been recorded at the Worcester Registry of Deeds and the copy of the registrar's receipt returned to the town clerk. Construction hours shall be Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30, Saturday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon, no work occurring on Sundays and holidays.
If construction applies, and this is...
If construction applies, well, he's gonna be doing construction there.
Interior.
Alright. Our developer shall comply with all decisions and conditions of all boards and commissions. The lots shall be developed in accordance with the, we don't have the plan, we've given a waiver on the plan, so, okay? So those are the conditions, and it's been made, seconded, and voted on, and we're all set.
So that's what the waivers is?
What else we gonna do?
All those in favor, did we go there?
Yeah, all those, what?
All those in favor.
Hey, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
It's for you now, it's because a special permit required all four of us.
Four people.
The board may also entertain a motion to accept a waiver for the site plan approval.
Alright, we probably need a waiver for the site plan approval.
Make a motion to waive the...
Site plan approval, because that's one of our conditions. Seconded, anyone?
Seconded.
Seconded, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, that's a vote.
Who made that last motion?
I made the last motion.
Where they made it?
Multiple seconds.
May I ask you a question? Where does he go from here? Is there another committee he goes to for the selectmen, or what?
He's been to them all. He's been to the ZBA.
Yep.
Okay? And here, and...
End of story.
Well, no, he's been before, he's been before the fire chief, the police chief, the highway department, he's been to all of those people already, and...
And the ZBA.
And the ZBA. And the ZBA.
Ploning Board of Appeals, he's been there, too.
You're good to go. Good luck.
And he's been to the state also.
Mr. Rosa, did you already get your license from the board selecting?
It's applied, everything's already submitted, so they were waiting for this stuff.
That's what I thought.
So, I'll say, right?
Yeah, we're gonna draft the decision, have it signed at the next meeting. There's a 21-day appeal period that must last before it can be recorded. Once it's recorded, return to us, we proceed with the building permits.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. And we have ANRs. Mr. Selmac?
Good evening.
Okay, this is on that property that you're developing on the corner of, on the corner of Prospect Street.
Correct. Yes.
And lots two through seven, those are the ones that are on, right on Prospect Street?
Two and seven.
Two and seven.
Two and seven.
Yeah, two and seven, yeah.
Okay, and they're on Prospect Street. You got the form?
I do.
You do, but the little lots.
This is lots can form.
Oh, those, you asked me if I had the form. You asked if the lots can form.
And this one?
From what I can tell, yes.
This one has me too.
Just for clarity's sake, John, do you mind describing the frontage for lot seven?
Sure.
As compared to the subdivision proposed?
The two A and R lots that are proposed, um, we're going to propose when we open up the hearing for the subdivision.
Yeah.
That the, um, access for the lots be off of the new road, uh, that we're gonna put in for the twelve unit subdivision.
Not off of Prospect Street?
Not off of Prospect Street directly. Reason of doing that is for conservation of the wetlands area, so that we can disturb, don't have to disturb, any more than necessary. If we had to come with driveways directly out to Prospect Street, we would have to ask the Conservation Commission for.
Crossing wetlands?
Crossing wetlands, we're trying to keep, trying to keep the whole project, because the project is, has a subdivision, but the A and R lots, even though they're not technically part of the subdivision, we're looking at the subdivision, you know, as a whole, for the conservation, to keep the whole thing under five thousand square feet of disturbance. Um, so that we're not trying to come in and say, okay, we get five hundred square feet per A and R lot, and then five hundred, you know, five thousand square feet for the subdivision. We just look at it as a whole, together, all four lots, even though this has been a step process, basically. We couldn't come in with the other two A and R lots until Ken had a chance to, you know, take a look at everything as far as, um, you know, drainage, all of the necessary things that come along with planning for the road. I've spoken to the fire department, the assessors office, um, you know, as far as access for the lots, and there isn't any objection at this point in time.
Are you creating a new road in this development?
Yes, um, that, should we show the whole plan, Ken?
Not in the A and Rs.
Yeah, not in the A and Rs, no.
That's next on the agenda.
Alright.
You'll see how the whole puzzle fits together, you know, when we did it, we tried to, like I say, keep the project as, as simple as possible as far as the wetlands go, and conforming to the rules and regulations of the town.
These two do not have frontage on the new road, this one's gonna have access from it, this frontage is gonna be considered off of Prospect Street.
Correct.
Just for lot seven?
Lot seven and.
And lot two.
So both of them in this plan?
Correct.
The two in this plan. So although that this lot seven will have frontage on Prospect Street.
Okay, the access is gonna be here.
It's also gonna have Prospect Street address, despite the driveway that's coming out to subdivision.
Okay, and the driveway meet requirements?
Yes.
To get the fire engine and stuff again?
On the driveway, yeah.
Now, I don't understand, why did we do the A and R before we did the subdivision? That's part of it.
I just put them on the agenda kinda same time, we could do them both, and the board could table this, until they've reviewed the subdivision application, but.
I think that that probably is what I would, uh, what I would like to see done, you know?
That'd be fun.
That's my wife's guy.
I'll shut the, shut these things off.
Yeah. So, I would like to, I would like to do that, I would like to table this.
Why don't we table this and look at the whole thing, John, okay?
That's fine, yeah, we weren't sure how to, you know, proceed with it, because the A and R lots and the subdivision, so.
It'll give us a better idea.
Absolutely.
Do you wanna announce that?
Okay, so this is table, and we're going to go to, to where are we? A platform, J W Land and Development LLC for a definitive subdivision plan new, known as Windmill Estates, for twelve lot subdivision on fifty through ninety-five Prospect Street, Auburn, Mass, and lot sixty-seven, lot twenty.
Try and motion open.
Motion to open.
Make a motion to open the hearing.
Second?
Second, motion's been made and seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay. Okay.
Okay, would you like me to?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Um, here is the, uh, the cover sheet of the subdivision, which I'm sure you've all seen by now. Outlines where this project is in relation to Prospect Street and the surrounding areas, so here's Prospect Street coming up. Here's a sharp turn, um, with Kelly Street right here. Booth is right across the street from the new roadway, and it's Hilltop Farms, so this is subdivision over here. And, uh, Route twenty is down here just a little bit, so this area here is the actual area of the subdivision. We'll get into that a little bit more as we go through. This is an existing conditions plan, which again shows Booth Road down here, Prospect Street, which comes around and loops up here. And the subdivision itself is outlined here, as that is in the, the two A and Rs that you've been talking about. There's lot two over here, and lot seven over here, which have frontage on Prospect Street themselves. And, proposal for this site, um, which has been here in a couple of early forms, earlier forms, a bit earlier. Uh, it hasn't really changed, um, we have twelve lots coming up the street. The street, as I said, comes in off of Prospect Street, right across from Booth, so we'll be making a T intersection. As you come in, uh, there is a little wetland area right off the shoulder of the road, it's basically a product of the roadway. The land that slopes, actually fairly gently, about three percent is the land grade gradient. And some of it does come down here, hits the, um, shoulder of the roadway, and then comes down along the roadway. There enters the drainage structure right here, and then goes into street drainage. We are gonna have to cross that, so we have a small wetland crossing right here, we have some drainage that will, um, let the water go from one side to the other side. And it's actually a very small drainage area, this, uh, the site has actually three drainage areas, that's the smallest, and that's the one we have to cross for the wetland crossing. As we come up the roadway, we're, um, proposing a small detention basin over here, it's a very shallow detention basin. It's, uh, less than a foot and a half deep, uh, so it's gonna really look more like a, a wetland when we get done and it starts throwing. It's just gonna be a low lying little area here, and it's gonna take the drainage from two catch basins here, and about, about roadway from about here to here. And then as you come in, we'll have the lots, there's twelve lots, uh, I've shown here, uh, potential building sites, and, uh, as part of the subdivision and the road construction, we are actually, uh, leveling off, proposing to level off the ground to about mid-location of where I've staged the houses, and the reason for that is so that this water is gonna come back into the streets. We're sort of pre-planning that, so we have the water from the driveways all going into the street system. And then most of that is gonna be picked up with a drainage system in the roadway, and then we'll come over to this larger detention basin, and this is also designed to be an infiltration, so infiltration detention basin. And we come up, uh, to eight hundred and fifty feet, we have, it's one of the waivers we're asking for, to our cul-de-sac, which is actually an oversized cul-de-sac at that location. We have water, uh, town water and sewer proposed in the street, and of course it'd be underground electric. And we have a number of, uh, street trees which we're proposing here, we're going to, on the street tree.
What's the width of the road?
Uh, width of the road, I have a cross section right here. It's twenty-four feet wide, big curbs on either side, the two minutes curbs for most of the subdivision, um, per your regulations, there'll be granite curbs with less than one hundred foot radius. Uh, we have shown a sidewalk five foot wide on one side of the street, um, and shoulders on the other. So actually, I'll go back and show you, it's a little harder to see, but the sidewalk is planned to be on this side of the street, right here, and it'll wrap right around the cul-de-sac.
The right away from the street, ten is?
Right away is fifty.
Fifty feet? How long is the road?
What's?
Eight.
Eight hundred and fifty feet. Eight fifty.
Measured, uh.
It's fifty feet longer than the normal.
Normal.
Yeah.
Accepted road, unless we give him a waiver, which I don't have a problem with.
And we could probably crowd this in, but then you'd have the lot lines being more skewed and everything, if, it's, it's, to us it's worth building another fifty feet of road to have it look better, and it doesn't really materially change anything.
It was basically the same thing when we did, uh, Curtis Meadow Estates, we came in with, with, uh, cul-de-sac road up there, and at the time the planning board, the lots were, lot lines were skewed, so that some of the houses, when you looked out the back, you, you know, you wouldn't see it obviously, but the property line would go across the backyard. So what we did is we built the road a little bit longer.
Depending on the conditions, that's an archaic figure anyway, okay? So I mean, there's no, I don't think there's any issues there.
Uh, this, uh, shows the profile of the road, uh, that we're planning. Prospect Street is right down here, so initially we're coming in, we actually have to come in with the steepest grade that we have on a roadway right off of Prospect Street, just to get over that wetland area, and have enough clearance so we have a structure connecting the wetland underneath it, uh, but that's only three percent. That's, that's the steepest we get to, so the road is, like I said, the, uh, the grade of the land itself is only about three percent. And we're going along with the grade most of the time, we're, we're really at about one percent for most of this roadway. We actually had to fight a little bit to get enough slope on it, it's, it's really so flat, it's pretty unusual, especially on Prospect Street. But, uh, we show sewer coming out all the way down, so it's just a simple situation, a sewer from the cul-de-sac all the way down into Prospect Street, uh, water would do the same thing, um, just comes along the roadway, and we have drainage pipes in here, this system comes off to that infiltration basin, and just a small little section, which is gonna take, pretty much what we were trying to do, is take as much of this roadway as we could into that other detention basin. As it turns out, it's only about fifty feet or so, um, but nevertheless, that gives it a little more treatment before it gets into that wetland area, so that's what we're trying to do.
Are there any major slopes to the lot?
No, they're, they're pretty, as I said, it's all, it's all pretty.
Now, where does that driveway, where does that road start, right where Arm and Lechance's, uh, first driveway was?
No, no, it's right across Booth.
Right across from Booth, so we made a direct intersection, which is part of the bylaws for a safe.
So this is right across from Booth.
You can see A and R lot number two, which is one of the A and R lots, you can see the wetlands in the front.
Right.
That's why we have the driveway going off to the road, we may not necessarily position the house that way, let's just draw it on there, just.
What did the Conservation Commission say about the, uh, about the wetland?
We have only applied for the other two A and R lots, well, actually four A and R lots altogether. We have received approval for them, because we didn't have any access to get, to tie into the road.
Right, we have discussed this with them, though?
Not this crossing, no, we, we decided to come to the planning board first, get feedback on the drainage and, and so forth, um, before we go to conservation, but we will be going to conservation shortly.
But we have a driveway crossing here, and a driveway crossing here, and then, you know, wetland impacts up there.
What about lights on the street?
Uh, we do show two lights, let's see if we get to the lighting plan, uh, the landscape plan, I think we showed, uh, I think we said two lights, um.
Actually, I thought there was only one.
Well, there's one at the end.
One at the end, yeah.
I have to check, we checked, uh, we checked whether we needed one down here, and I don't remember whether we did or not, I guess we did not. I think there's, I think there's a light on one of the holes here.
I think, yeah, I, yeah, I'm pretty sure that was the case.
So we have a light here at the end of the cul-de-sac, and then I remember we said we would check whether there was one here or not, and I do remember now there's one there. And we're, we're planting, uh, trees roughly every forty feet, um, I've moved them around a little bit on, uh, I think they're shown as forty feet on that one, and I'm moving around a little bit on this one, because as you can see, there are gonna be driveways, and we can't have the trees in the driveways, so what I anticipate is we'll have, um, on average, trees every forty feet, which is your bylaw, and, uh, we'll arrange them as we go. What I've shown, uh, for trees now is red maygles and sugar maygles, which is kind of a favorite of mine for, uh, some of the subdivisions I've seen. It looks really nice, when you go up the street and fall, and now you got a red and green, and red and green and everything, so, uh, I thought that would be a, a good street tree, but obviously if this.
Is there enough peer review on this?
No.
It's in progress now. Town engineer is also doing the review.
They, uh, they got the choice of the three?
Yes, we elected to go, or I elected to go with Quinn Engineering based on feedback from the group. They came in at the same rate as Graves Engineering, a regular peer review, and.
And we've been trying to give you at least three choices of peer review.
Right.
Yes.
Rather than just one.
Yep.
Keeps everybody, keeps everybody competitive.
Exactly, exactly.
So anyway.
The, um, that area looks pretty heavily treed, is it your intention to, um, maintain, keep some of those trees? Or are you gonna clearing that whole area?
For where the houses are, and where the road is, obviously we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to clear, yeah.
Yeah, I think this, this was my rendition of what I think we're nee- we're needing to do, and looking at the grading that we have for the road and the houses, I came up with a swath sort of like this, it's in the lighter green, which is probably gonna be yards, and, uh.
And then the green is gonna be trees.
The heavier, heavier green is all areas that probably won't be disturbed.
What's the width of that swath?
Well, what do they?
Four hundred feet?
Uh, let's see, that's fifty feet, so, you know, that's probably.
Hundred to there?
A hundred.
A hundred and twenty-five on the other side?
Two hundred and twelve.
Let's see what the dimensions are on here.
So you're closer to two hundred, I'm sure.
Halfway back.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like the, the lot lines back here are two fifty, so about half of that, two hundred and fifty, and all the same on this side.
But you're leaving all the trees behind the places.
Yeah, as much as we can, um, I was, well, we have wetlands over here, so we're limited in what we can do, how we get in.
Now we have the fifty-foot buffer as well, from the wetlands, and that's why this plan, and now you can see how that, number seven.
Yeah.
A and R lot, because we have basically the headwaters of the wetland up top.
Yeah.
If we had put, positioned the house and, and made that lot smaller, we would've been disturbing more wetlands up in that area. So it just made more sense, and it kept things simple.
Right, so you're not disturbing wetlands with that seven now, are you?
Exactly, we're not touching them. We're not even in the buffer, we won't even be asking for, uh, except in the hundred-foot buffer.
Yeah.
So we will be applying an NOI, but we're not gonna be asking the Conservation Board, um, any relief on the fifty and twenty-five foot setback that they have.
So the, through the chair, the replication area at the top, John, that's for the A and R lots that you had done previously?
No, that replication that's shown there is for the road crossing down below, and it's basically one and a half times, um, the disturbance of what we're proposing to replicate of that.
John, I'd like to see like two or three lights in there, streetlights.
Okay, um.
I mean, one in the beginning, one at the cul-de-sac, one at the beginning, one in the cul-de-sac, and one someplace in the middle.
Yeah, there, there is one pretty much right there, I believe.
We went to a DCG meeting, and I, and I can't remember, they had feedback on the lights, and they, and they, um, said one, so that's why we put it in. But it, we can, it's typically like on when we did Brattle Path, we did one on the curve.
Yeah.
But I think they said the road was so short, and, you know, and we had one in the beginning.
You'll be looking for a waiver for the fifth, I mean, I'd like to see three, something in the beginning, one on the curve, and one at the cul-de-sac.
If they've got one in the beginning, just need two on that road, though, if there is one on.
There's already one in the beginning, then.
Yeah, if there's one in the beginning, you just have to.
That lights up the entrance in the road.
Like one on the curve, then.
Yeah.
On the curve or on the.
That's typically where, where we put it up on Brattle Path.
Cause my street, the, the lights so far up the street, the people are all parking between that streetlight way up the top and my house down the bottom. And I don't have the Doverments anymore. Well.
Down, down below, just wanna point out too, that, um, detention lot number one, uh, that was an A and R lot, but the town has the bylaw, now I talked to, uh, Bill Coyle about it, um, that in the past, when retention basins and detention basins went in, it usually went in, it's gonna be an easement on a lot. Now part of the new bylaw is that you want this lot to be a non-conforming lot, or can be a non-conforming lot, that's deeded over to the town at the end, so as a result, uh, we gave up that A and R lot down below for that purpose, and we, we intend on turning that, as well as the other one, over to the town according to the new bylaw.
And there's enough access to the one in the back, so they can get in there if they have to clean it up, yep?
Yes.
Yep, and a fence around it.
Yep, and the one down below, like Ken was saying, is gonna be so shallow.
Don't need a fence.
It's basically just gonna be like a depression, um, in the grassed area.
What do we save for fence, six feet?
I don't know.
I think it's four.
I think it's four.
What, around the detention form?
Yeah.
Do we have a standard?
I believe it's four feet, so I'll go check.
I think it's four, this is, this will, as John said, this will become a town law.
Yeah.
It's, uh, you know, generally, um, all the fences around detention basins, but it's also something that you see right away.
Yeah.
And, um.
Four-foot fence.
I'm just, I'm just thinking this lot, it will just look a lot nicer if you don't have a fence in there, and if you don't need it, if it's only, it's a fifty-year storm, it's, uh, one foot and two inch, it's one point two feet, and in a hundred-year storm, it's, uh, one point three feet, I think, of water in this detention basin, so most of the time, there's really not gonna be much of any water in there, um, it's, uh, it is just gonna provide a little stilling area, so water coming off the, the road can go somewhere before it goes into the wetland area.
You mean?
So it'll clean up any of the sediments.
You mean the big, you don't mean the front, the front one you're talking about?
The front, the other one, the smaller one.
It's not gonna have a fence?
Yeah, the small one, this one wants to have a fence.
It's a little.
Yeah, this one's quite a bit larger, and that one wants to have a fence, I'm sure.
Is that one of the waiver requests, Ken?
Yes, it is.
What, fence on the lower?
Yeah, not to have a fence, I did show, I showed the location for them, but I put in a waiver request, so it, it's really up to how the board feels. I, I don't feel it is a security issue on this one, and it'll just look so much nicer to come in and see basically an open vegetated lot than it will be to come see an open lot with a four-foot fence in the middle of it.
Our bylaws do require a chain link fence with metal posts to privacy slits. So it's, you know, you can see your reason for the aesthetic preference.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's all it is, really, it doesn't really make a lot of difference to anything else.
Okay.
But something, something to consider, if you would. Uh, the only other plans I have is the actual subdivision plans, the survey drawings, which actually show those A and Rs. This is the A and R they were talking about, and, uh, the second A and R up here.
Okay.
Or lot seven, which should look like the A and Rs you have to sign.
Alright, so, anyone in the audience have anything to say? Any questions, comments? Yes, introduce yourself, please.
I'm Steve Quiddamal on Kelly Street.
Yeah.
Three Kelly Streets, this is a question on the lot nine area, now, is there any access coming off of the, off of, across from Kelly Street? In it all, I know there's been some clearing up in that, that area, I believe it's lot nine area.
There's, uh, well, this is lot nine, I mean, well, lot nine comes to here, this is lot seven, correct?
Right.
And this was, uh, five and six, so the clearing you're seeing is actually on five and six, correct?
Yes.
And that was, that was part of the, um, uh, we went to, uh, Conservation, went to the earth fill board for me, for this work last, uh, fall, I guess, and that was, that, that's what that clearing is. So what you'll see, you will see a driveway here and a driveway here later on, but this lot, hopefully, no driveway. uh, fall, I guess. And that was, that's what that clearing is. So what you'll see, you will see a driveway here and a driveway here later on. But this lot, hopefully, no driveway. And certainly none, none of the subdivision outlists that way.
There'll just be two houses there?
Right. There's gonna be, yeah, one house and driveway here, one house and driveway here.
And wasn't there a third one? Where was the third one?
The, the third lot up here is this one. And originally, it was thought that this one would also come out this way. But as we got doing this, we just said it's a much better idea to have it come in this way if we can.
So they actually took a driveway off of Prospect Street up near you. There's only gonna be two now instead of three. And that, and that's probably vegetated off of Prospect too. So there's, so there'll be trees there still.
Through the chair, those two lots, those two A and R lots, those are single-family homes that aren't part of the subdivision at all?
No, they're not. That was approved before.
Now you can see how much bigger we made lot seven in order to get it back. And then once it cut back, you know, when we looked at the wetlands, it just made more sense. As far as less disturbance to the area. Made the plan simpler.
Yep. Any questions? Board have any questions?
This gentleman has any questions or not?
Any question, any other questions from the audience? No? Okay.
So we need a results for a peer review and stuff.
Yeah, we, well, we, we have to wait for the peer review results. Okay. Everything looks good so far.
Guy, the only way you're gonna be able to tell us is when the peer review comes back.
We'll wait until we get feedback. Ken wants to get feedback on...
I thought it would be good to get the peer review comments first and then we start addressing them and then file with conservation. So we'll keep the meetings going, sort of in parallel, but I thought I would try to get one, one peer review.
When we, when we first went into conservation on, on the A and R lots and we filed the ANRAD plan for the whole piece of property in the beginning, it was the first step. This plan that we have here now, other than lot seven, is really the only change that we've made to the plan. We've tried to keep everything as simple as possible and stay out of the wetland as much as possible.
And keep it as treed as possible.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
When we looked at the lots, we did, we did discuss this whole thing with the conservation when we were out there doing the lots. So it shouldn't be a surprise for...
So what are we gonna do now? About close the hearing and...
John, see if you can come up with something. The only little issue I got is that front right-hand detention form.
Yep.
Even though it's only, it's shallow, that if you can come up with something that you could put around it that won't hurt the aesthetics, that still would maybe prevent someone from, some little kid from doing, getting away and falling into it or something like that.
Well, we addressed the waivers.
Really not much you can do, right, except put a fence around it. You know, to prevent children from getting in.
Oh, see if you can...
What were the waivers?
We're, we're, it's a waiver request, but again, it's for aesthetics purposes. Like Ken said, being a foot and a half, that's purely up to the board.
Yeah, I think, actually, John, it's probably the board and then the town is gonna take it over, so they'd have to be okay with it too. We're just putting it out there that we don't think that it really needs it. It, and it would look better without it, but we understand the other side of the question too.
Yes, yeah, the town, the town is gonna end up holding it. Exactly.
All right. So the waivers they're looking for are the tree plan, okay? They want a waiver from the request, requirement for locating all of the trees with trunks over twelve inches in diameter, measured four feet above the finished ground within the minimum front setback. This is, okay. So they don't want to plot all the trees in there. They're often ended a lot.
There's quite a few trees up there.
The trees coming up. And the second waiver is the road length, which we already discussed. They want to go eight fifty instead of eight hundred. And sidewalks, they want sidewalk on one side rather than on two, which we've done in the past. And they want a waiver on the fencing on that lower detention part. So those are the waivers that they want. Are any questions or problems with those?
Are we voting on that tonight?
No, it's just for my feedback.
We just wanted to let them know that we did have some problems with it.
I think the, the number of houses is in there with the length of road, I think.
It's not on the plan.
It's not on here.
Okay.
And John, you're not, you got the little water in the front on Prospect Street. Then you got the little darker green and then you got the lighter by the development. You said you weren't gonna be cutting many trees out other than that.
In the dark green, no, that's the actual wetland itself, on, on the west end, the east side of the property. The two A and R lots, there will be houses on the prior approved ones going up. But on A and R lot number two, we try to keep it just how it's shown in the lighter area. That would be the yard area.
Okay, yep, yep, yep. So the whole front of that lot's gonna be treed and wetlands?
Exactly.
Okay, towards Prospect Street.
Yeah, cause if you, if you remember on the other two A and Rs, we had that area that we left in the front with the wetland and we got the driveway skirting up the sides.
Yep.
But like, see where the wetland comes up from the road where it goes in?
Yep.
Yeah, the upper part.
Right.
And the back, Ken, put your tan going up towards the development. That's water.
Yep.
And then the other little bit darker green, lighter green or whatever.
It's forest.
That's all forest. And that's basically staying. You're not gonna cut in that area that's that covered.
On A and R lot number two, correct. Right, we're not cutting in that area in A and R lot number two.
And John doesn't want to count all the trees.
But lot one, three, three, five, seven, the wooded area where Ken's baby finger is, is that, you're gonna cut that out?
Yeah, that's where the two houses are, were already pre-approved. But we came in on, with the fill permits on.
Yeah.
How are you getting to them?
Yeah, they, they come in, driveways, off of Prospect Street.
They come off of Prospect.
You're gonna do a crossing?
Yes, crossings.
We've applied, we've been approved by the conservation on the four lots. Those site plans have been approved.
You need to put the house in and some yard and then...
Right.
But all that other, for clarification, all that other area that's darker green, okay, is gonna be forest, trees.
Yeah, all this area.
Yep.
Yep. And then the back of the ones on this side too.
Uh, here.
Yep.
Well, like in back of...
Yeah, these both have access off of Prospect Street here. Those other A and Rs had to come in this way. So that doesn't show, but there are, there are development plans for these.
Now go above that and to the left. Yeah, right behind there. Now that, that's supposed to be forest.
Well, this is budding land, actually. Our property land is right here. So this is, this is budding land.
Oh, and that little hunk isn't yours?
We're not touching it.
Right, that's staying part of...
We don't loom to here. We just have the, the green going all around it. And if we didn't, if we didn't say somewhere the number of lots, because it's, it's a ten lot.
That's just going over there.
And I think we, I had that in once as a separate waiver, but then I think the word came back to me that it was, it was the same as the length of road.
That's right. It's the same section of the bylaw, which you, which you cited on the plan, just didn't reference the number of lots on the plan. So I would add that to the waiver section under vice plan. It's to, if you're asking for twelve lots as opposed to ten, your regular dead-end street would be a limit of eight hundred feet with ten lots. We're asking for a eight fifty-foot road with twelve lots.
Twelve lots.
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
Again, the fence would be slot, has to have the green slot, slats in it. And, you know, you could put some shrubs around it here and there if you wanna.
All right, so it's true.
Just feel more comfortable with it.
Fine.
That's on the detention one, the lower one.
And then one additional street light near the corner, on the other curve of the road, one additional street light.
Yeah.
One in the cul-de-sac area and one on the curve.
There is one there and one here. I know there's one in the vicinity down here. We'll take a look at it and see whether you think it's adequate.
Yeah, if it's within reason near the front of it, but it's a half a mile.
All right. Okay.
So we're not voting waivers today. It's just to give guidance to applicants.
No, okay, so...
But the others I'm all right with.
So we postpone this and then vote on the A and Rs.
Something about it.
Okay. So I entertain a motion to postpone this.
Continue.
Until we get the peer review?
I make a motion. Make a motion to continue the hearing until we get the peer review.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed? All right, so, uh, we really can't set a date until you get the peer review. Is there a date for peer review to come back?
We can put this on for our next meeting and if the peer review doesn't come back, I'll be in touch with the applicant.
Okay, and we'll come back the next one.
If they need to.
All right, okay.
It's fine.
All right, now the A and Rs.
A and Rs don't necessarily require a vote, so long as the board has information they feel.
Now you can see how all the pieces of the puzzle fit together.
Yeah, yeah, that's much, much more informative than if we voted on the A and Rs first. All right, so what'll be signing?
The A and R plans. We don't have to vote on these. It's just the signatures.
Okay.
They don't have to vote to endorse the, it's approval number two. Secondly, not a, not a hearing at all.
So we're signing this first. You're gonna give us a pen that writes.
I am. I'm going to try.
And you're gonna give us a block to sign it way down here.
Two of them, just the continuance.
Nope, didn't make it.
And Mr. Roffler? And I'm signing another?
Just three copies.
Done.
Here, one you can play with. Other one? Here's the third one. We're sending these guys home. Did you give them a copy of our standard conditions?
When the group's comfortable and voted to accept them, I'll make them law.
All right.
Thank you. Let me roll it up quick.
You're gonna send it out to Bill, you're gonna send them out to Podham, you're gonna send them out to everybody in the world. Oh, we got minutes. We got that list of standard conditions. Does everybody get a copy of that in the mail? Can you pack it?
Need one more?
That's the one. Okay. So you got your A and Rs? You got your continuance? Oh, he doesn't have his A and Rs, you know?
I need two. I just have one. Perfect.
Now he's...
And your signed copy here.
All right.
All right.
Great challenge. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Great to meet you, Ken.
Okay. So we have...
Through the chair, if I may bring something else to the forefront that's on the agenda.
Could hardly wait.
Oh, yeah, no, I wouldn't. We received copies of the West Street road improvements that the board endorsed
Yeah.
to the, to town meeting.
Yeah, they're digging them up today.
That's right. The only thing that we didn't have at the time were the A and Rs for it. The board just need to sign those as well.
All right. So they're digging it up before they got the A and R?
They needed the town meeting vote first too, so...
And they haven't got that either?
They did get that. So this is one plan that is large enough for three sheets. So I tried to make this as easy as I could.
Trying to get us a headache.
So it doesn't roll up completely. Should have liked this sign.
Appreciate it. I didn't listen to him too much.
You were?
Yes.
Mr. Roffler, as you were not here, you do not have to sign this one.
Okay. Well, give me that back. Why do we have two?
There's three sheets that make up the full one.
Oh, so I don't sign any of these?
I can use them. I don't know. Full Sharpie might be a little... Must get a real fine tip and it doesn't.
There you go. There you go. Now what are we doing?
And here are the...
I'm getting writer's crack here.
I'm sorry.
Something like that.
Here are the actual copies for our records.
Yeah, I think that, um, we've been home so many times. Has that been continued?
That one's not the worst of them.
No, but it's, it's getting to be one of them.
It has. I'll get into that in a moment. This one was put on the fold a little bit, but I think you get that off that side.
The book?
Yeah, you don't see it.
Yeah?
This one's starting to get a little proof.
And what are we doing now?
I'm turning?
Looking at our continuances.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna go through that little lettering that's in there.
I shall.
Okay, City of Westfield.
All right. So I solicited feedback from planners throughout the state that have dealt with excessive continuances since the board has brought this up. Several occasions regarding a couple of the current items on our agenda. And the City of Westfield was kind enough to provide this letter. It kind of gives a procedure of how they approach this. They gave the, the applicant some options. So they can either request to withdraw the application, request the board to re-advertise and re-notice the hearing, it's a continuance without discussion, or they take no action and the board will expect them to appear at a, at a meeting of their distinction. So I believe this may be a good process for us to pursue when the board is getting, has grown tired of excessive continuances for applications. And they ask myself to draft a letter of such nature to these applicants.
Yeah.
I like it. Continue.
With them not present. Well, they got the three, they have the three options. They get the three options. But we're not gonna continue these things indefinitely. Some of us will be old and gray and gone by the time they come back.
Thank you.
Some people might even lose their hair.
Yeah. Okay, no, I think that looks pretty good. Draft something up like that for us. So you got that, you got our...
What you wanna do though, every time somebody applies for a, uh, a permit, et cetera, is you wanna hand them that.
Yeah, okay.
You know, standard idea. Just, you know, put it out there.
That's it, right up front.
Right up front and say this is...
By the way, did you get that?
Yeah, the same thing with standard conditions. Both of them. This is what, these are the standard conditions. So be prepared for those. And this is what happens if you decide to keep coming back hot and fanatically.
And each continuum is, is five hundred dollars.
And the only thing I would say on the standard conditions, Matt, is under the subdivision standard conditions, if you're gonna stick with, you know, regular time, that's great. But you've got military in one place and, and, you know, standard time in another.
Where did I do that?
The military time is under the subdivision standard conditions.
I see, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Also, under site plan approval standard conditions number two,
I see it, okay.
the applicant shall abide by all approvals and conditions from state agencies, EN slash, or other town boards and commissions. That's the only comment I have on that.
All right.
I spoke to the town engineer. They, I spoke to Joanna. She wanted to add one to the subdivision so far, which was the applicant should submit a complete addition of the drainage report to both the town engineer and the office planning board. Cause most of the time, these things end up getting piecemealed as the peer reviews come in. And we end up with three separate sections of the drainage report. And they want them to be assembled and complete when the project's finished.
Okay, good.
But there should be some more. I agree with you, Mr. Kosky, that we should solicit the opinion of some of the other boards to see if there's conditions that may benefit their...
So we got the standard conditions done? So we got the standard conditions done? All right, what are you giving us with master plan and zoning bylaws that we...
I believe we still need to act on the continued hearings. If you'd like me to send a letter to all three, or if you want to go through them to decide.
Oh, okay. So we want to send that letter to Welcome Homes?
The Welcome Homes special permit, the applicant and his engineer met with the town engineer staff and myself late last month.
Okay.
And went through a complete overhaul of his drainage system.
Yep.
And the proposed retention area. So their engineer is working to make those revisions, and it was almost a complete 180 from what they proposed, so I can
Is that the one with...
Hardly sympathize with the delay here.
Is that the one with the big banking?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, what did he do about the banking?
That remains to be seen.
Okay, so...
This applicant has only asked for this continuance twice consecutively now.
Okay, and they're working on the solution?
Yes.
So we probably don't have to send one to them?
What a vote to accept the current continuance.
I will, now, what about a vote to accept the continuance?
Continuance over here.
Yeah.
We need to make a motion for that? Make a motion to accept the continuance of the Welcome Homes special permit for Rethan?
And...
Second.
Second, it's made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's say vote.
I think, Jimmy, our abstain in this instance, because it's appeared several times.
I was on the original, I was in on the original portion of that two or three times.
You may have missed more than one.
I don't think I did.
I'll check, I'll check.
All right, and applicant David A...
That's how far back it was.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
David A. Papas, the defendant of subdivision plan continued for live lot subdivision of West Street, Auburn, Mass. And he wants a continuance to 5/12.
This is based on our...
Our guy's not reviewing it yet.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. We grant a continuance to May 12th.
Okay, a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's a vote. Applicant for VNG 310 Washington LLC requesting site plan approval. They're asking for a continuance until 5/26.
Matt, do you have, when was the first time that they came?
Jim was here for that, so it was five months ago.
Yeah, it's a long time.
Yeah, that was October.
It's the only hearing that we've had for that.
I believe it was late November.
Was it?
It was the, yeah, the 20. Do we make it 2024 or 2027?
It's the show station.
So that's one. That's approaching six months.
That was Broder was representing them.
That's correct. So a motion would be ordered from...
It's just hard for me to believe that you would come in with everything, and then all of a sudden, need in six months, still don't have corrected and felt that you had everything ready the night you were here.
Yep, well, I entertain a motion that we either accept it or...
Just for the sake of procedure, I hate to be picky, but since you're an abstain vote, the vice chair would entertain a motion.
Oh, okay.
I entertain a motion to continue the hearing or to send a letter, whatever you determine.
Or continue and send the letter?
Continue and send the letter.
How many votes do you need to do that?
Or you can't make the motion.
No, I'm not making the motion. I am proposing.
Suggesting.
Suggesting.
I'm not gonna make it.
Or the board would require them to appear at the next meeting. It could be a motion of that nature too.
I'm not gonna make it either.
I think it would be, again, in my opinion, at least decent to ask them once to appear. And if they cannot appear, then the letter could say that this would no longer be continued and be automatically withdrawn, something to that nature.
Okay.
I'm sure it's all correct.
Sure.
Okay.
You wanna go along with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that we send a letter.
That's why we pay the big bucks.
Yeah, right, to attend the next...
Yeah, to attend the next meeting.
The May 12th meeting, not the 26th that they requested?
Twenty, you gonna do 12th or 26th?
Do it the 12th. And if not, they're gonna have to start from scratch.
All right, so it's moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes, March 31st and April 14th?
On the March 31st, minutes, I need to make a motion. Someone make a motion, so... I don't want comments. All right, on the first page, there's a, the paragraph is repeated twice, after due consideration, after due consideration. And...
On the 14th, March 31st?
On the March 31st, minutes, sorry about that.
Do you have markups on your handout?
Yeah, well, I can...
Hand it over to Eric.
And it says, "The Wendy Steinheil made a motion." And...
You don't like that?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not feeling that. And then on the page 1, 2, 3, Warner Hill, it says, "Running off 71 First Street onto his property with persist or get worse." I think it should be ruled with persist or get worse. So I'll give you those, Eric, and you can...
Thank you.
Those changes.
So any other...
Make a motion that we accept the minutes with those changes and corrections made.
Okay, or second?
Second.
Second, motions we made and seconded, we accept those minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Another abstain vote. You weren't here in the first place.
I abstain.
Thank you.
Okay, now we got April 14th.
Just one comment on the April 14th minutes, it's Ronald Brooks, not Ronald, so under number 12.
See on this board? No, he's not.
Some of that kind of...
And I'll give you that, Eric, too, and then you'll have that as a reference.
Thank you.
He's got a farm. Oh, he's, yeah, he's 61A.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of April 14th. I can't.
That's correct.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of April 14th with the correction. Am I allowed to second this?
You were here. We're past the evens now.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Very good. Last thing, master plan zoning bylaw review committees. Board selectmen has asked town manager, or requested the town manager start to assemble these committees following now that the general bylaws have been voted at town meeting. So they're going to be looking for volunteers for both the master plan and the bylaw review. One of the recommendations that came from the selectmen was to have those two committees combined. Julie and I have gone through a lot of feedback from other communities about why that's not necessarily the greatest idea.
What two committees combined?
Master plan review committee.
Yeah, and what?
And a bylaw review committee.
Is it strictly zoning bylaws?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought we just did all the bylaws.
That was the general bylaws. So the zoning bylaws, which we have a lot of items that we've addressed
Okay.
for revisions as well, but these are the zoning bylaws.
And when does they need to be done?
I don't have a timeline on it yet. This is something that sometimes can take a couple of years.
But the master plan revision is, that's not up yet.
It is.
It is? Now, is it that?
Includes rezoning?
It was 87, and then when did we, we just did it?
We did it again and...
There's a lot of places that need to be rezoned.
Res zoning is case by case.
Like Route 20? White industry.
Like Route 20, 99% retail.
It was Steve Wallace.
This much?
Right.
Who was the Miles industrial?
There was a one in 2006, wasn't there?
What was the kid guy's name that helped us?
Steve Wallace?
No.
It was a consultant. Me, me, ours in Harrington.
Well, oh, there might have been somebody, but there was a...
Miles?
He came, he spent considerable time.
I'm not sure.
When does that come to fruition? In other words, the master plan, the results from the master plan review committee? How long does that take place and when does it become law?
So you know that had to be...
How long it takes to do the revisions? We would have to go to town meeting.
2006.
When Larry came on board.
It's hard to say. Depends on how long it takes.
Yeah, right around that time, yes.
And how, how many times and when do they meet?
Well, when I came on full time.
Every 10 years they do the revision for master plan.
How, every week, every month?
Could be, the schedule would be determined by the groups. I think it's twice a month.
Dan was here, I remember when we had that.
Dan, Dan Carpenter?
Yeah.
So, but maybe not just yourselves, but if you know folks that may be interested to help out.
I might be interested in the master plan, you know?
I'm definitely interested, I just don't have time.
Come on.
All right, so what else we got?
That is all I have.
Adjournment, I would like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's good.